Call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so you guys can all mute, rise if you would like, and say it along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our first matter of business tonight is going to be to go into executive session. And I have a motion that I'm going to read. So I move to go into executive session at 6:32 PM pursuant to Mass General Law, C 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Superintendent of Schools. Based on my belief that having the discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect in the bargaining position of the school committee. Executive session will include only the school committee. School committee will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think that was Amy. Thanks, Amy. And we'll go around the room. Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Mike.
Yes.
Okay, everybody. See, Nikki, thank you very much. We have no citizens comments tonight, which is the next piece. We will move now to the consent agenda. And Mr. Horish, I wonder if you have that handy, that motion?
You bet I do. I will move to approve the consent agenda for June 15, 2022, containing the meeting minutes of June 1, 2022, and a warrant of June 17, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sharon. Any discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote. So Sharon.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I, I think I got everybody there. Great. Consent agenda passes. We can now move over to the school committee chairperson update. So the only thing that I have to share with you guys tonight is our subcommittee assignments. And so I am going to just pull that down. Bear with me. Ready for the unveiling? Virtual drum roll, please. All right, guys, there it is. Karen, score update.
We're up two to one.
Neshoba, Neshoba rec soccer. Sorry, everybody. I'm off agenda. So as you guys peruse that spreadsheet, I don't know that there are a lot of surprises there. I did try to maximize our strengths while also balancing the workload. Joe, I hope you will like my humor in that one box under policy. You're the best advisor we ever had.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You're too kind. I didn't see that until you pointed that out. Thank you.
Yep. Do you guys have any questions or comments? All right, thumbs up. Thanks. So those will be our subcommittee assignments for next year. We will obviously do a lot of this work, this organizational work at our retreat in August, kind of getting together and talking and goal setting, reminding ourselves of the charge of each committee, et cetera, and all the good work that we'll do next year. All right. Let's get, stop sharing. How does that? So next item on the agenda is superintendent's update. Over to you, Kirk.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I came tonight, tonight with lots of exciting things to talk about. It is no accident that I wore my Neshoba green today because I, I felt it would be apropos to come with a lot of spirit in, in that we've reached some, some culminating benchmark points for our school system this evening. But before we get to those agenda items, I first wanted to share that we thought we knew this was going to be an exciting day for strategic planning, our Portrait of a Graduate. But what an amazing day for us that, for a school system in another place. He wishes it could be here tonight, as you all have experienced recently. School events and traditions and those types of things sometimes come in conflict with what we're doing. So Dr. McGuire is with his family tonight, having some excellent family celebrations. But we're here to celebrate the nomination of Miss Laura Friend as our next Assistant Superintendent for the Neshoba Regional School District. I'll tell you what, I, I, I am so excited to have Laura join me, Ms. DeAngelis, the entire cabinet team, because she brings to us, as you know, a wealth of knowledge. But she's got institutional knowledge and a lot of educational capital and interpersonal capital that is going to be so valuable to the role. So included in your packet, I provided for you Ms. Friend's resume, so you can see her extensive career, beginning back to the launch of it as a high school English teacher in Arizona, up to current day, where she is the Luther Burbank Middle School Principal and has been there for many years. So later this evening, I will be recommending to you all to, to approve Ms. Friend as our Assistant Superintendent. Precisely, this is the only position, I believe, in our policy manual that the school committee does approve, other than hiring the superintendent. So we'll be moving to that, and at that time, we'll pause and give a chance to ask questions. But I do want to pause at this moment and just give Ms. Friend an opportunity to introduce herself to the greater community and say a few words. So Laura?
Sure. I, I'm humbled and honored to be recommended as Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning by Superintendent Downing. And I thank the school committee for your consideration. It truly is an honor. I have been an educator for just about 28 years. Time goes by really fast. I have been, I've spent the majority of my career at Neshoba, and it has been a wonderful journey. Neshoba is a special place. It truly is a special place. We have highly talented educators, the best students, and incredibly supportive families. And I don't just say this. I know this because I've lived it and I've seen it. I have seen it in the classrooms. I've seen it from the classrooms. I've seen it from the lens of the Department of Teaching and Learning, having worked in central office. And I've lived it as a building principal. We have tremendous capacity, and our future, I know, is bright. I could not be more committed to leading and supporting our district as we move forward. We have an incredible strategic plan with a robust vision and mission that I know that we're going to review this evening. And it would be an honor and a privilege to be a part of this leadership work. And I can promise you that I will work tirelessly. I'm looking forward to the journey, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you for joining us tonight. I can say that when I announced this recommendation last week to our faculty and staff, I received numerous accolades and celebrations that this recommendation has been made forward to. So we will get to that agenda item shortly, Madam Chair. In the meantime, I'll proceed with the superintendent's report. Just two more items to talk about today. This past Sunday, I had the amazing experience of attending my first Neshoba Regional High School graduation as your superintendent. And people asked me, I believe I was talking to Mr. Gleason, Attorney Gleason, about this yesterday, about the graduation. And I told him what I've told a lot of people. Until you experience that moment of standing on stage, holding a child's diploma, a young man, a young woman's diploma, and they make that turn and start walking toward you, there's this five-second moment of pure joy that you get to see in the student coming forward. And as a superintendent, I get to repeat that moment over and over and over again with, with each student that came across the stage. And I just want to say it was amazing. And congratulations to all of our students at Neshoba Regional High School, and also to the event itself, Dr. Boynton. All of the people on her amazing team really did a nice job with that event. And Madam Chair, I would like to thank you for attending for our other school community members that were able to attend on Sunday. That really was a special moment. And the last piece, or two pieces from the Teaching and Learning Report, as I skate out of my lane here for just a moment, is just an update on the Student Opportunity Act. If you remember, this came before the committee a while back, prior to my tenure. And this relates to additional government funding. And the bump in our, our Chapter 70 funding was related to the Student Opportunity Act. And I'm happy to say that after review of our plan, the department has viewed that all components of our plan in providing supports in the classroom have been approved and meet all the guidance of the Student Opportunity Act. So they have some, some suggestions in terms of communications and follow-ups. But we were, I was really proud of Dr. McGuire and the Teaching and Learning Team working together with our Student Services Department to put together a nice plan to support our students. And then the last piece is a reminder that Summer Academy is coming up. And there's new project-based learning sessions added to the Summer Academy for this year. The link is in this report and on the agenda. So I encourage people to jump into our Summer Academy offerings to take a look at them. And with that, Madam Chair, I will entertain any questions on the superintendent's report before we go to the next order of business.
I would just like to chime in and echo how amazing graduation was. It was this unbelievable display of unity and amazing kind of school and town regional culture. And I was so impressed with all of the kids. And the speeches were fantastic, and the organization of it was fantastic. All the people who put that together did such a fantastic job. I was really honored to take a small part in it. So great job, everybody. It was fantastic. All right, looks like we're good there.
Great. And shall I move into the next item?
Yes, so let's head over to new business.
Yes.
Very exciting.
So I would like to introduce a couple of people to you this evening. Mr. Zef Giannetti and Mr. Ed Lee, along with Scott Borsel. These are consultants from the Teaching and Learning Alliance that guided us and led us through a process of developing the strategic plan that is in front of you tonight. And so you have the long document of the strategic plan. This particular document is not going to be the public-facing document. Rather, the doc, it is going to be, as, 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 working with our consultants, professionally presented digitally and be posted on our website in quite a dynamic fashion. But this plan outlines the work that we did over the past five weeks and really the past year, and even reaching back into those documents and processes prior to my arrival to really understand our school system. So I am just going to go ahead and present the plan, and then we can entertain some questions. So Ms. Masterson, would you mind bringing the, the, the plan up? I only have one piece of technology this evening, so. The presentation of the plan, that is. There we are. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Masterson. So the title of our plan is "Learning Along the Great Road." And this is an exciting theme for us that I'll get into in just a moment. But if we can go ahead to the next plan, excuse me. "Learning Along the Great Road." In the, the packet that you have in front of us, you'll see that the cover is a roadmap, a roadmap of our three towns with the schools coming off of that roadmap. And as you know, Highway 117 is regarded as the Great Road. I frankly didn't even know this until I had put on my GPS and was coming up 85 from Hudson, and my GPS pops up the Great Road as I was approaching 117. And so we chose that as our theme because it is the link that we have between our three towns, a link that I think people know and they understand. And so as we think about the Great Road, and we thought about, well, what is it that we are about? It is about learning. That is the focus of our school system. It's why the schools are built. It's why we're here. And so "Learning Along the Great Road" is the theme that we've attached to our five-year strategic plan. Next slide. So this plan is a tool that's going to assist us in being focused on the things that are most important. What it is, what it wants to be, and how to achieve those goals. And it represents those set of actions that we choose to, to address in order to deliberate and put all the pieces together to give our community, our students, our faculty, a clear picture of all the activities involved in effectively accomplishing our goals. So the strategic planning process affords us the opportunity to really seek feedback. And we took a lot of time in doing that this year from all the constituents of our school system so that we can reflect a plan that is a collective understanding of all the data sources that we examine through the process. So what was the process? Well, next slide. Phase one of the process is building the foundation. That's the collection of all the artifacts. So the entry plan that I present to you in March was just one of hundreds of artifacts we provided to our community. All the survey data that we've done with our communities, both within the strategic planning process and survey datas, data that we had from other processes, like our, for instance, our communication survey, our SOR survey. We also took the data from the community meetings where you all participated in, in the school committee meeting. But we hosted community meetings for town officials, faculty and staff, our, our families. And all that information was gathered together, and our team examined that. And we began building a plan based upon the common themes and trends that we saw throughout the data. And in implementing the plan, we now are going to be developing the action steps to the objectives and the priorities which we have developed through the process. Next slide. So the first part in the process is identifying our mission. And the mission is what we do as a school district. It's who we serve, and it's what the results are of what we do. Madam Chair, I have to, oh, oh, I lost my screen. Thank you. So the collective mission statement that we gathered here is, "Together we inspire and challenge all learners to realize their unique potential and become active contributors to their community." In developing this mission statement, we thought it needed to be to the point and concise so that people can understand, this is what we do, and it's how we serve our community and the results of what we want in the end. Next slide. In examining the core values, this is the foundation of that work. And they influence how we conduct ourselves and how we engage with others. So "We value academic achievement and personal growth, voice choice and agency, lifelong learning, a safe, caring, and inclusive community, collaborative partnerships, innovation, and a sense of belonging for all." And you can see the device here with the, the "we value" with an ellipse with the "for all" at the end was no accident. That was very intentional. Because ultimately, when we put together the graphics on this, on, on, on our plan, these values aren't prioritized one over the other. They actually carry equal significance. And so that's why we wanted to collect it, sort in this idea of, these are the things we want for all. Next. Our vision is that aspiration that we have for the organization and for who we serve. And it's intended to be a clear guide for choosing current and future courses of actions. It's our compass. It's our North Star. So in those debates, we developed a new vision for our school district, a vision that we hope people can say off of the top of their minds in every environment that they're in in our school system. And that is, be your best self, pave your path, and impact the world. This is the vision we have for all those who come through the Neshoba Regional School District. And to get that, we've developed a theory of action. This is the set of actions that are implemented in order to improve the organization and help us fulfill that mission. It's related to the objectives and how their implementation will lead to that organizational improvement. So through communication systems and protocols, clearly aligned and articulated curricula, innovative practices, shared leadership, equitable opportunities and outcomes for all, and effective allocation, we will inspire and challenge all learners to realize their unique potential and becoming active contributors to their community. You can see some of the language that is in the theory of action is connected to the mission because that is the whole point of a theory of action. These are the action states that we are making in order to live our mission. And from there, we developed into our strategic plan themes. And the, the themes, this is the core focus for district improvement over the next five years. It is broken down into strategic objectives, the initiatives, the outcomes, the time, and who is responsible. And the four common themes that we saw as strands throughout our data sets were really for us to be focusing on connections and communications, teaching, learning, and leading, culture and belonging, and human resources and facilities. Now, what I will say is, when you look at the plan, you'll see the strategic objectives and the initiatives. And you'll also see the timeline. The timeline gives you a guide of what we are prioritizing in our first year of implementation of the strategic plan. So those are the types of things that we're going to be working on this summer in our, in our work as administrative team and later in our retreat that we'll bring forward to the school committee in your retreat at the end of August. So right now, you see the objectives and the initiatives. And then once we identify those first-year initiatives, we'll be developing the action plan steps that we'll be taking in the school year 22, 23, moving forward. So our first objective is to improve communication systems and protocols to strengthen culturally responsive homeschool relationships that foster understanding and community engagement. And you can see the strategic initiatives below. Developing consistent structures, ensuring universal access to information, improving upon communication of student progress, exploring and establishment of an educational foundation, and develop and implement a family-university, which is our educational component for our families to understand the interworkings of the Neshoba Regional School System. Next. In teaching, learning, and leading, our objective is to support and inspire all learners through improving and implementing clearly aligned and articulated curricula, equitable, innovative instructional and assessment practices, and shared leadership. So you can see the initiatives that we've prioritized here. As you recall from the entry plan, we identified our curriculum as really a key element we need to be looking at in teaching and learning. We identified assessment with the introduction of Renaissance learning, K to nine, and building of common assessments and common assessment practices across our entire school system. But also looking at what is the educate instructional pedagogy that we need to be thinking about that is going to lift that curriculum off the page and make it authentic and real for our students. Next slide. Our next objective is culture and belonging. We want to ensure equitable opportunities and outcomes for all through increased awareness, representation practices, and communication around diversity, equity, and inclusion. This is a big theme in the data sets that we collected, particularly the survey data and the community meetings. So I can say now that our first strategic initiative points to conducting an equity audit for diversity, inclusion, belonging, pre-K to 12. And that is an initiative that we are going to move forward with, we know, already next year. And I'm going to spend the summertime investigating with my colleagues opportunities to look for consultants that can come in and work with us to do that deep examination in our organization and community. So we want to deepen understanding practices of culturally responsive teaching, integrate those SEL practices we've been working on, and further develop those practices. We want to work on social-emotional curriculum and how that's integrated into all of our courses. And this is an interesting part. We want to grow this notion of a pre-K to 12 Neshoba identity. As Ms. Biverito talked about, just about graduation, we have this wonderful Neshoba identity at our high school. But sometimes it takes our family several years even to realize that their talents feed into a regional system when they first come to us. We want people to know and understand what it means to be a member of the Neshoba community. And we're going to be looking for community partners along the way in that initiative. Next. In human resources, facilities, and finance. So our objective is to maximize the potential of student staff, caretakers, and community through effective resource allocation, cultivating short-term, long-range planning, maintenance, renovation, and building initiatives, recruiting, hiring, supporting, retaining a highly effective diverse workforce, maintaining and upgrading technology systems to access to robust digital resources. So this is where you'll see the first goals around what I've been terming as bench strength to you and our community, of really looking at our, our teams across the system, building in those support structures so that if one member of our team needs that help and support, for whatever the reason may be, we have people that are trained and ready to step in and support. We need to articulate our district priorities through the budget. So that is an annual goal in terms of how we present our budget to our community based upon the priorities we've identified in that particular year. We need to recruit, hire, and retain highly qualified diverse staff that mirrors our educational vision. And our financial commitments to professional development need to be reflected in those commitments as well. There's two pieces that you might see here that are missing, frankly, and that is capital planning and the potential for a Neshoba Regional High School through the school building project. And so where those two things live are in the capital plans, working together with the towns as they are part of the regional agreement where the, the towns are responsible, have their portion, or are responsible for the, the capital improvements in their towns. And also with, that's what I meant to say, the, the capital improvements to the towns and the school building committee. We have our, our plans and our vision through the work of that committee. So next slide. I want to come back now and connect this all to our Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate. So this was presented to you in March during my entry plan. And the competencies that were prioritized and identified by our community were communication, creativity, empathy, culturally competent global citizen, a learner's mindset, and perseverance. Next. And if you recall, these four competencies were very close to being included in those six core competencies that rose to the top. And the solution that we came to at our final meeting around the Portrait of a Graduate is, can we take these competencies, lift them from where they're, where they live on this slide, and how do they fit into the six competencies we've already defined? So, next slide. You can see, for communication, we added "seek, contribute, and respond" to feedback to achieve collective outcomes as one of those competencies that was walked over. Next slide. Creativity, we added translate original and innovative thinking into viable solutions and taking risks. How to develop, organize and manage new initiatives and interventions. Next. And empathy, understanding the big picture and proposed solutions that are mindful to the impact they may have on other parts of the system. Culturally competent global citizens, we added illicit diverse perspectives and contributions, honor and leverage strengths to build collective commitment and action. And the learner's mindset consistently improve the quality of one's own thinking by skillfully analyzing, assessing and reconstructing, enrich the learning of both self and others, implement and reflect critically on a solution. And finally, to perseverance, we lifted and added identify, evaluate and prioritize solutions to difficult or complex situations and applies disciplined thinking that is clear, rational, open minded and informed by evidence. And so with that, that is our presentation of our strategic plan along with the Neshoba Portrait of a Graduate Competencies. And I'm not asking us to take a vote tonight to approve these two documents as they are an agenda for next week. Madam Chair, I am asking that we take two votes because we made a collective decision in strategic planning that the Portrait of the Graduate really those are the competencies and they're going to be tied into our curriculum. And we want them to be dynamic in their own way as they grow, adapt, change if our priorities change. So by having them live separately and referring to them, it seemed to make sense to approve those in two ways. So we're asking you next week to take a vote on approving the strategic plan and our Neshoba Portrait of a Graduate. So with that, I will take any questions. And I know Mr. Lee and Mr. Jean Eddy are here if there's any questions for our consultants in the process of our work.
All right. So yes, thanks to Ed and Zeph and Scott too, for all of the help that they provided to the Strategic Planning Committee over the last many weeks. You guys were top notch and we are so appreciative of your guidance. Does anybody have any questions? Mike?
Yeah, this isn't so much a question as it is a clarification. For those of us that have been on the committee for a while, this is sort of the next version of what was previously referred to as a school improvement plan where we have
District Improvement Plan.
District Improvement Plans where we had very specific goals and expected outcomes. And so that's important to note. Also, for those of us that were not involved in the process or for those of you that were not involved in the process, this was not done at the exclusive pleasure of the superintendent or his cabinet. This was a an iterative, thoughtful process that involved all stakeholders, administrators, building administrators, central office, community members, teachers, school committee members. So there are, I don't know, roughly twenty to thirty voices represented in this plan, and that's important to note. And it's, I guess, the last thing is that it's important to keep in mind that this is this is where we are and where we want to be, right? So these are sort of the these are sort of the philosophical engines that are going to drive what we do for the next five years. So if you are a parent that's watching this presentation, you can refer to this document as what is going to drive so many of the decisions that happen in your child's school. It's going to define how our budget is crafted. It's going to define who we hire and the the philosophy that is going to be drawn in order to retain them. So it just encompasses so much. It's it's one thing to say how much energy and time went into this, but it's really another thing to imagine that this one document really is a map that leads us to a destination and you know, ideally that destination is going to be arrived at in five years, but there is so much information packed into this document and into this process. And it's it's really, it's really exciting. It's really, really exciting. So hopefully, if you get to take a deeper dive, you you realize how ambitious this whole thing is.
Well said. Thanks, Mike.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt for a moment?
Of course.
If you'll indulge me, I want to follow Mr. Hares's lead and if I can take a moment to recognize the committee. So Madam Chair, from my office, we had our cabinet team of Dr. McGuire, Ms. DeAngelis, Mr. Succi, Pat Maroney. From our school committee, Leah Viverito, Mike Hares, Sharon Park. All of our principals, Joel Bates, Ross McCarron, Kyle Grady, Laura Friend, Sean O'Shea, Kate Boynton. We had four teachers, Laura Padgington, Kim Rocha, Kevin Cavini and Laura LaBrecq. And three of our parents, Stacy Kramer, Leslie Patterson, Courtney Philbin. They all took time out of their lives and and skipped activities and various things that they could be doing so that they could be a part of building this vision. So I just want to thank that entire group for joining us.
All right. Thank you so much. Keeping in mind that I I cannot remember if you said this, Kirk, that not everything will be accomplished in the first year, but that you have it spaced out over the five year duration. Much of it, much of it is built to be kind of long term. So even though five years seems like a long way away from here, these are things that will perhaps continue to emerge in future strategic plans too. I'll also say that not only does this serve as our district improvement plan, the strategic plan, but it also is going to inform the school improvement plans. It's going to inform Kirk's goals in the next go around, which then I assume all of the administrative team's goals will plug into this plan and all teacher goals will plug into this plan in some way, shape or form. So it really is kind of like Mike said, the guiding light of the district moving forward. And it is very, very ambitious. So thank you, Kirk, for that courage to put it all on paper.
Madam Chair, if I may respond to that as well, because you and Mr. Hes both alluded to something. And that is where this plan is different from what you cite, what you might have seen in district improvement plans before is timelines and accountability. So you can, you're you're able to see the departments that are responsible for achieving these goals. And I want to remind the group, this is a dynamic document. This is not a document that we have now chiseled into granite and we will revisit again in twenty twenty eight. It's it's quite the opposite. This is a dynamic document for which we will review yearly. And it would be my expectation that when we reach the end of next school year, that you were all asking me questions about how did we do along our path of achieving the goal that we laid out in year one? And it's likely very possible that we say, you know what, we need more time to work on a particular goal and we advance that to the next year. Or we may advance up a goal we're not anticipating to address for three more years and lift it up because we've identified that we need to reach it earlier. So I just want to remind the committee, this is a dynamic document. We will continue to visit and it will guide us particularly in our retreat in August around identifying our priorities.
Great. Go ahead, Amy Cohen.
Thank you. Wow. This is an impressive, impressive body of work that you've put together.
It's just that we put together, Ms. Cohen.
Yeah, that the committee put together. Absolutely. And I'm really grateful to all the people that served on the committee and all the hours that went into this. It's obvious that you know, it was a labor of love and that our district is, we are really all, each and every one of us is going to benefit from the vision that has been laid out here. I guess I did have two questions as a member of the school committee that wasn't directly involved in putting this together. One is regarding the timeline that you referred to. I know that there is a separate document that was shared with the committee via meeting materials. And I think that's where I saw a timeline, but could you just spend a minute or two explaining how the strategic initiatives fit into that timeline? Are they laid out in order of priority or?
Yeah. So after our last session last Friday, we were able to sit down, a small group of our leadership team sat down and we looked at what are the things that we envision that we need to dig into immediately. And there's, there's a lot. I'll be honest with you, Ms. Cohen. And for me to go into that at this moment would be expensive, but I would steer you towards looking at the long report as the timeline is laid out there. But for instance, as we looked at strategic initiative number one, that has developed consistent communication structures and protocols across the district. With the outcome being we want better understanding for our families and and engagement. So this year, we are going to be working on a communication structure. And I know that the recommendation of Ms. Laura Friend, she is a master of communication. If you're a member of Lancaster, you've seen these communications. And she is gonna gonna be my my right hand person in helping us develop those good practices. That will happen immediately. You're going to see those things right away, particularly along with the launch of the website refresh, which I'll remind everybody, we're not getting a new website. We're refreshing the previous website with a new interface and organization of it. And then, of course, there'll be an annual review of those. So that's one example of that. But the report gets into more, the universal access, we can get started on right away. Improve upon communication of student progress. So we have plans to work with our our administration teams on. How can we look at things like conferences and the engagement level there? I'll tell you, remote conferences turned out to be, we we accidentally walked into that via COVID that turned out to be a brilliant way to improve some communication engagement strategies that our families have really returned some positive feedback on. As a matter of fact, a lot of the parent data on that particular piece, Ms. Cohen, parents were saying, don't get rid of remote conferences, right? It was all over some of the data pieces on communication. So I could go on, but that's an example of that. So as we work with our leadership team at the August Retreat, we meet August tenth and eleventh. We're going to look at those things, prioritize those, and then we will come to the school committee retreat. And I will be sort of giving you that menu of here's what we believe as a leadership council, we're going to be able to achieve along with what are the specific action steps to do that. So I would give you an example on developing consistent communication structures. We are developing a small structure on the superintendent's weekly communication, which we will rebrand and rename as not my communication, but our communication. But then we're able to collect data on the number of hits, responses, things like that. So I could go on and on, but that's an example of how we're addressing these things.
I think that helps me understand a little bit better because it sounds like each year you'll be drawing from these strategic initiatives to set goals for that year and that will form the timeline from there.
Yeah. And Ms. Cohen, when when we review these every year, when we come to our end of the year meetings, you all as a committee are going to have an opportunity to say, I see we've made progress in these areas and offer direction for can we be looking at the next step? And so we will be discussing that in our review meetings at the end of the year. So it becomes that that cycle that Dr. McCarthy educated us all about several times this year and how this process would work.
Okay. My only other question had to do with how the how you see the school committee and the work that the school committee does supporting implementation of this document.
I think that's the purpose of our school committee workshop. That's where we dig into that and think of what those specific actions are. Because as you know, we want to keep the operational components of the school system within the responsibilities of the leaders that we've hired to deliver on those things, but we have some school committee actions to incorporate as well. So if in our retreat, we look and say, gosh, here are some things that maybe we can incorporate or lift to improve upon, say, the our our communications section. Well, we can, we can then build upon the plan to include those. I will, I I have Mr. Borsel running around in my head right now saying we don't want to overload ourselves with initiatives because if you have too many, you have none. And so we need to be mindful of that. But we will be doing an annual review so that we can assess what is doable and what also is is attainable and in what is challenging.
So thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield my time to other members of the committee. Thank you so much.
Amy Vessels.
Yes, I was wondering, with the report just coming out, you may not have be able to do that, but I was wondering how it was going to kind of impact your professional development plans for this next year with teachers. I assume it's not going to impact the summer institute or whatever, because that's already kind of been set in motion probably before this report. But can you speak a little bit about that? Or is that something you're going to be deciding in August as well?
Ms. Vessels, that is an excellent question. As you would imagine, we we had to queue up things that we anticipated were going to be major components of the plan, and we have done that. I don't know if Ms. Friend would mind me putting her on the spot for the moment, but it seems like an opportunity for her to tell you about a planning session we had with Dr. Larry Epstein just today around one of our strategic initiatives. So Laura, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So the the initiative that Superintendent Downing is referencing is related to our work around it's strategic objective three around diversity, equity and inclusion and belonging. And Superintendent Downing has arranged for
As well as social emotional learning.
Right. And social emotional learning has arranged for a consultant, someone who he you're familiar with Superintendent Downing from prior work to come in and begin a phased in approach to training our administrators, our mental health teams, and then working through a coaching model with our staff around interaction strategies to help support our students with social emotional needs. So we see that as the next iteration of our work after really two, two years of work on social emotional learning. So that's an example of work that's already begun and work that we will continue to assess as we move forward. But we're excited about bringing Larry Epstein in next week to work with our administrative team next Thursday, and that will begin that work in support of already one of our objectives and our initiatives.
Thank you, Ms. Friend.
Thanks.
All right, everybody. Anything else on the strategic plan? Of course, we won't vote until next week. And questions can certainly come then. But seeing none, I think we're going to move on. Great work, Kirk and team. And to Zeph and Ed and Scott and the whole organization. We really appreciate your help.
It it really was a pleasure working with the Teaching Learning Alliance on this project. These are three leaders who I highly respect and they were able to work us through some dicey conversations at time and they learned that, boy, did we like to wordsmith, that's for sure. So we but it helped us really identify the things that are most important to us. So Zeph, Ed, please extend our gratitudes to Scott as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving providing us with the opportunity to work in Neshoba. Thought it was a very thoughtful and thorough committee. And the product, the overall product is really a fine product that I'm, I hope will be a guiding and living document. And it sounds like it already is that it's been incorporated into your, you know, will be into your daily operations. But thank you for the opportunity. Scott sends his regards. He's in Texas this evening at another meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, everybody. So that said, we're going to move on to our next item of new business. And that is the vote to be taken on the approval of Assistant Superintendent Appointment for Laura Friend. So I turn to Mr. Horash. Do you have a motion for us?
I do. I will move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Laura Friend as Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning Effective July first, two thousand twenty two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sharon. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I just want to share how excited I am to be bringing Laura on board. As the superintendent noted, she's got a very deep institutional background and knowledge of the district. She has the confidence of her The confidence of her, uh, her, her current teachers and, and her community and. Um, you know, Lancaster's loss is the district's gain, and I, I really do think that this is an opportunity for. Um, for Laura Friend to e- extend her experience and her understanding of. Um, you know, best practices and, um. What is best for children and what is best for a, a district and individual schools in a much broader circumstance. So. I'm thrilled.
Thanks, Mike. I see Amy Cohen's hand.
I can't follow that. I can't say anything better than Mike just did, but I'm, I'm very excited to, uh, vote in favor of this appointment. So.
Anything else? I will say that. My view is that although Lancaster might be feeling like they are losing something today. That there is plenty of Laura to go around. And, uh, we will now all more globally benefit from all of her expertise and her, all of her abilities. Um, so all the awesomeness that exists in Lancaster is now gonna get to spread across the great road. This is very exciting, and I am also excited. Thanks, Laura. Uh, Sharon.
So I will say that as a person in Lancaster, Lancaster is sad to lose Laura, but. I just can't even. Find words to describe how exciting this is. Um. When Kirk called and told me that, that you had been chosen and appointed for this position, Laura, I. Just took my breath away. I was so excited to hear, um, that you would be stepping into that because. You have brought so much to Lancaster in the years that you have been. Um, at Mary Rollinson and at Luther Burbank and, um. To be able to bring that expertise and all of the compassion and knowledge and all that you have. Um, and share it with the whole district is incredible. So. We are sad in Lancaster, but we are happy to.
All right. So if there's no further gushing, I will try to. Move to the vote. All right. So, uh, let's go around the room. Joe?
Yes.
Yourself, yes. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. Congratulations, Laura.
So excited. Thank you so much for your confidence in me. Um. As I said, I am just incredibly excited to step into this new role. I am going to miss being at Luther Burbank every day. It's a great gig. And it's a great place to be. Um, and I am looking forward to working with the district in a different capacity. Uh, and helping support and lead, and I am only a phone call away. And I will be present in all of the buildings. I've spoken with Kirk about that, and that's incre- that's, that's how we make a difference. So. I'm, I'm honored and excited to dig in. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I can just, uh, wrap up, uh, this, this piece with one last point, and that is, um. We're leaving, uh, Luther Burbank in outstanding hands with our principal, Mr. Sean O'Shea of Mary Rollinson. Uh, this is a time of year where finding another principal, uh, can be difficult. So Mr. O'Shea is taking on the responsibility. Of bringing, being a pre-K to eight principal next year and overseeing both buildings. And, uh, we are going to hire a middle school dean. Uh, with the available staffing we have now in order to assist with all the student life. Uh, side of, uh, the administrator's role so that Mr. O'Shea can focus on the teaching and learning component. Um, of the building. So I know Ms. Friend is, uh, gonna be also involved in oversight of, of the transition of that. And so I am highly confident it's gonna be a great transition, uh, uh, for Lancaster and, uh, for our entire school system.
Great. Yeah, I don't know how we got so lucky to have so many great leaders in this, in our buildings, but, um, super fortunate for sure. So thanks, Laura, and thanks, Sean, and thanks, Kirk, for this transition. It's pretty seamless, and we're excited. So we're gonna move on to, um, our next item on the agenda. It is the Director of Business and Operations Report. And, um, as we all know, Pat couldn't be with us tonight for good reason, um, but. And so I think we're just gonna skip over the results of operations, even though it's in the meeting packet.
Madam Chair, I, uh, shamelessly, uh, earlier this evening reached out to Mr. Echol and asked if he could just speak to it since he saw the presentation of this document. At Budget and Warrant Committee on Monday evening.
All right, let Rich shine. What do you know, Rich?
Uh, I don't know if it's a shining moment. I, I can tell you my preparation for this meeting was listening to the recording of, of, uh. Ms. Maroni telling us what was in the report, so I wanted to make sure it was as close to the words that she would use. Um. So with that in mind, thanks, uh, Mr. Down, or Superintendent Downing, for having some confidence in me to do this. Uh, we're gonna go over the May Operations Report. Um, so I'm the Acting Chair of Budget and Warrant. And, um, the Subcommittee got an opportunity on Monday as, as, uh. Superintendent Downing mentioned to look at the May report. According to the Finance Director, uh, Ms. Maroni, Pat- Patricia Maroni. There's been some savings on the insurance and benefits front, which you'll see on that top line with the number one next to it. Um, and her reasoning or the district's reasoning is that there's been some forecasted unemployment costs that came in less than anticipated at this. Point in the year. Um, moreover, uh, actually, if you can, if you see under number one there, it says insurance savings due to the M I I A credit. Well, there weren't a lot of people, a lot of teachers and staff going to, um. To, to medical, uh, to go see the doctor and stuff like that. So the insurance company amazingly gave us a credit. So that was a nice little bonus. And, uh, so it's a good thing that, uh, we have that because it's, it's nice to have a surplus or. Or some savings in that budget line item. Uh, because there are some deficits that, uh, the district's trying to overcome. If you look at health services, uh, they're running a deficit, deficit for more, um, staffing costs. Another area that's running a deficit, modest, by the way. I mean, this is a fifty-nine million dollar budget, so we're not talking huge deficits. Um. Is, uh, due to higher utility costs. Uh. Basically, the, the, the costs have gone, we, she forecasts, Ms. Maroni forecasts the costs. For the year on a month-to-month basis, and as you probably all know, if you've looked at your heating oil costs or even gone to the gas pump. Utilities have, uh, doubled and tripled in some cases. So, uh, I'm com- that's compounded by the fact that the heating systems ran with the windows open this winter, right? To protect against the spread of COVID nineteen virus. Um, so, uh, it just wasn't run as efficiently. So the facilities is doing the best they can, but, you know, some structural costs you just can't overcome. When you look at the substitute teachers line, which has the number three there next to it. Hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, uh, in deficit. Uh, there's just been a need for more substitutes, you know, for a variety of reasons, pandemic-related. More medical leaves probably deferred from the fall. Um, and, and maternity, uh, leaves. Uh, she, Ms. Maroni wanted to point out, when you look at the district technology area, this is another, uh, bright spot. Um, we are have showing a surplus for the year. The district's showing a surplus for the year. Uh, in addition to getting some rebates from the federal government. Uh, that they generally apply for, I think it's called an E-rate reimbursement. The district also set up more grants for Chromebooks. And that, some of that, uh, surplus money is gonna be able to be applied in other areas. Um, which is great because we're. Hitting an interesting point for the district. Um. There's also been, uh, some savings in salaries because unfortunately the district couldn't hire as quickly as they'd like to or at all. And so with the delay in those positions, there was some savings in not having to pay those folks. Uh, as much money because they started later in the year. Um. And I think that's it there. Every- everything else is pretty good. You know, I think. Two things I wanted to point out about this for, take any questions. But I, I think I might find myself quickly out of my depth, but you can ask anyway, and maybe Superintendent Downing could answer. Um, I would say, you know, we had a joint meeting of the Budget War Committee and the Audit Advisory Committee, so we had a lot of people looking at this, and. We were all impressed at how, um. Accurate. The forecasting is, um. And I, you know, where, why this becomes important is one to control costs. So one of the, one of the goals of the Audit Advisory Committee is to look at the financial. Uh, controls of the district, and from what we can tell at this point, we're gonna take a deeper dive next year with some guidance from Superintendent Downing on kind of. What lenses he wants to look into it and, uh, and with the new director that's coming on as, uh. Finance Director Maroni cycles out. Is, uh, you wanna be able to forecast accurately that you're on budget, but also. We have what's called a, a, an E and D fund or an excess and defin- deficiency. So a lot of people that. Follow town finances know this is the general fund or the savings. What's called the E and D fund in, in, um. For, uh, regional school districts, we're allowed to have about five percent of the budget. Uh, in E and D funds. Um, we're gonna have about one. If you look down there, it looks like we're gonna put about a million dollars back. That's the line in the lower right-hand corner where it says a million, about a million dollars. That's basically what we took out or, or the district took out and used for revenue to help fund the budget for this fiscal year. And we're gonna be able to put that money back so we can fund it for next fiscal year. And it's right around two percent of the budget, right? So that, there's two hundred thousand in that fund right now to end up. You know, this is my, uh, opinion. This, this is not the district's, um. Number, but they believe it seems like that they'll end up with about one point two million in the E and D fund, which is a. Which is an okay amount. It's about two percent. Uh, we, we had the opportunity of going over the budget in the same meeting. We asked the auditor what he thought of that. And he thought, well, we're doing a lot better than a lot of other districts. You know, ideally, it's, it's, it's closer to three percent. Uh, but, you know. That's another million dollars or something like that. So that, that's, those are teachers that we probably would need to replace. So the good news is that we do have a healthy amount of money in that rainy day fund. Um, and that's something that we will probably need looking ahead, considering the way inflation is right now. Um. So. Uh, anybody else have any other questions or, or? Mike Horash or Brett Collins, other committee members have anything to add?
Mr. Echol? Madam Chair, may I?
Of course, go ahead.
I, I just, for a point of clarification, I just want the committee and our public to know that, uh. Uh, by state statute, uh, your E and D fund cannot be any larger than five percent of your total budgets.
Yeah, we'd actually have to give it back to the towns. So. But I think the whole goal here is to have a little bit of a surplus in case there's a rainy day. Uh, like, say. Fuel prices go through the roof. And so the district seems to have, uh, adequate financial controls to manage and forecast that. Thanks.
They already feel, uh, through the roof, so, um, hopefully they don't get a lot higher. Just a little commentary there. So thank you, Rich, for filling, uh, that, that gap for us. That was very well done. Gonna stop sharing. And, um, now we can move on to the next matter of business, which seems to be a donation, and Kirk, I'll hand it over to you perhaps, or Laura.
Uh, yeah, I've turned it over to Ms. Friend to go ahead since this is relative to, um, Lancaster.
Yes. I'm going to go ahead and read the letter that was submitted to the school committee for consideration. Please accept this letter of request to receive a gift donation on behalf of the Luther Burbank Middle School. And Mary Rollinson Elementary School. A gift donation in the amount of two thousand dollars has been offered to the Luther Burbank Middle School Athletic and Music Program. And a gift in the amount of one thousand dollars has been offered to the Mary Rollinson Music Program. These generous donations have been made by Jason and Leslie Allison. As a means of gratitude for their children's experiences at Luther Burbank and Mary Rollinson. As their youngest child moves on to the high school in the fall. The family has shared that they would like to express their appreciation for, quote, "all that has been done for their family over the years," end quote. The Allison family has asked for the donations to be used to further our school's music and physical education programs respectfully. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this very generous gift donation. Sincerely, Laura Friend and Sean O'Shea.
Fantastic. What a great gift, uh, from the Allison family.
Yes.
So I'm gonna turn to Mr. Horish with a motion perhaps.
Yes, I'll move to accept the donation to Luther Burbank Middle School and Mary Rollinson Elementary School, the amount of. Two thousand dollars has been offered to the Luther Burbank Middle School Athletic and Music Program. And a gift in the amount of one thousand dollars has been offered to the Mary Rollinson Music Program. These generous donations have been made by Jason and Leslie Allison.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion? Just our deepest gratitude. Thank you so much, uh, to the Allison family. This will go to great use, no doubt. All right, let's take a vote. I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, of course, and thank you.
Karen?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes, and thank you.
Amy Cohen?
Yes, and I'd also like to say thank you.
And Brett?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. So thank you again for that donation. Uh, the next matter of business is our stu- Student Representative Report, and Dan Avi is here to share that with us. Go for it, Dan.
I am, uh. Not a whole ton to talk about as school, as you know, is wrapping up, you know? Uh, we got fin- we had finals this week, so the past. Yesterday and the next few days, we had finals. So yesterday we had a normal beginning of the day, and then. Last two periods or so, uh. That was one final period. And then the, the today and the next two days. We had late starts, uh, and two finals, uh, per day. And each final day had like a lunch period in between them. I don't know, but I can't speak for everyone, but I think finals for me have gone pretty well, pretty smoothly. Yeah, that's about it.
Great, thanks, Dan. Um, and also knowing that, um. These cumulative assessment schedules haven't really been normal for the last couple of years. So you guys are ramping that back up? Um, you find that students are adjusting?
Yeah, I agree. I, I mean, I think, uh, there's probably a little bit of getting used to finals because. At least for me, this is the first final that I've taken, being at the high school, because, you know, first year. End of freshman year, COVID, and then we had COVID for most of the sophomore year. So, yeah, it's my first final, but I think everything went pretty well.
All right, good job, Dan, and all the students. Showing that perseverance, portrait of a graduate. Uh, any other? Comments? Yeah, Amy Cohen?
I just wanted to, uh, congratulate Dan. I think he received an award at the award ceremonies on Monday night, and I think that was something that's. Also been. Come, come back since COVID. Was that? Is that the first time you've? Been through something like that, Dan, as a junior? And, and what was the? Kind of reaction among students?
Yeah, uh, that was the first awards, awards night, uh. Presentation or whatever you wanna call it that I've seen since I've been in high school. So I believe that's the first one in the past few years because of COVID. Uh, yeah, I did a see, receive a computer applications award, and. A lot of people were pretty surprised that there was a awards night, but it was like a pleasant surprise. It was nice. It's, uh, something I can put on my resume too, so it's great stuff.
That's terrific. Another tribute to our high school there. So Dan, I just wanna say it's been our pleasure having you here this year, and, um, we do have one more meeting, although school will be out. And so this is perhaps going to be the last meeting where there's a student report, unless you find the need to join us again. And we'll add a third item to the agenda, but you don't have. And we'll add a third item to the agenda, but you don't have to if you don't want to.
Unfortunately, I won't be here, I'll be in Washington DC. I'm going to be going to a program for computer science, just to see what, what's that, what that's all about.
Yes, that's awesome, well, um, congrats to you on that, and again, you've, you've done such a great service, we really appreciate it. And we hope you will think about coming back and serving again, so yeah, round of applause, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
If we don't see you, if I don't see you, um, soon, I'll see you on the soccer field, good luck in your tournament this weekend.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Dan. All right, everybody, so our next item here is, uh, some unfinished business. The next piece on the agenda is the calendar revision, Dear J Calendar Recommendation Vote. And I think I might have Mike with a motion.
Yes. Uh, I will move to approve the revisions to the 2022-2023 school year calendar as presented.
And I will second that. Do we have any discussion on the superintendent's recommendation? All right, seeing none, we can take the vote, Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Myself, yes, Joe.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
And Brett.
Yes.
All right, that's unanimous, thanks Kirk for putting that together for us. Our next item is the vote on the student handbook, which was presented to the committee. Um, the slight revisions was presented to the committee last time, so Mike, I turn to you again.
Yes, I'll move to approve the, uh, 2022-2023 school year, uh, uh, Neshob Regional High School Handbook as presented at the June 1st, 2022 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sharon, any discussion on the handbook revisions? Or the handbook in total? All right, seeing none, we shall take the vote, let's mix it up, Brett.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Amy Cohen. Yes, I see a yes there. Sharon.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Joe.
Yes.
Fantastic, so that can go forward. Um, the next one, I hope sails right through as well, Karen. No pressure, anyone, um, is the, the second reading of the harassment policies, uh, which are pretty detailed bunch. Um, actually, hold on one second. So the motion as it currently reads is to, um, vote them all at the same time in one motion, is there anybody who would like to do it differently and go one at a time? I know that Karen made, um, some very minor revisions based upon Joe's recommendation as our policy advisor, just to clean up some of the language. Um, so that is probably the only, the only change you'll see, it's not substantive. All right, so we're going to do them all together. All right, Mike, I turn to you.
I'll move to adopt the revisions to policies ACAB, JICK, AC and ACR as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sharon, any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take the vote, let's go to Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Good, Brett.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Uh, Karen.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Did I get everyone?
Uh, Mike Horash.
Sorry, Mike. What do you say?
Yes.
My screen jumped a couple times, so it was like the coconut's moving. All right, the motion passes and the harassment policies are now in the book. So guys, um, I, without objection, I think maybe I will jump to the School Building Committee as that may or should be the only subcommittee report we have. You can certainly correct me if I'm wrong after Joe is done. So, Joe, do you have a report at all?
I do, Madam Chairman, and, uh, I do have quite a bit to report this evening, so, um, as most of you, if not all of you know, last evening, we had our third public forum. This was on, uh, the options review and the site selection. So, uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with the options are, let me just quickly delineate for the committee and for those watching what the, uh, building committee and the district are looking at as far as this building project is concerned. So the four options as presented are essentially, one, a code upgrade to the existing building. The second option would be a renovation of the existing building. The third option would be a, um, renovation in addition to the existing building. And the fourth option would be a new build, so this was part of the forum last night. We also went over, uh, site selection and, uh, again, this has already been presented to the committee, but, um, right now, the district is essentially committed to the current Bolton location, the Green Road, Route 117 location for the high school. So, uh, that was essentially the forum last night, we had a fairly good number of people. Uh, I think that, uh, the, um, the live streaming of the event, uh, helped bring in more people for this event, so, um, not as many as I'd like, but, uh, I think we're getting there, I think when we have our next forum in September, we should have a bigger crowd at that time. Um, as far as the building committee is concerned, we are meeting on, uh, Tuesday, the 21st, predominantly to approve the preliminary program submission to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This will essentially be a report to the MSBA of everything that the committee has done from December of 2020, right up until the 22nd day of June. Um, this will be submitted on or before the 27th of this month. So in this regard, and I'm putting the world on notice right here, uh, the SBC will be meeting, uh, on the 21st. We are meeting twice, we're going to have our regular meeting at seven o'clock, we are going to adjourn at eight o'clock. And at eight o'clock, or by the time thereafter when we adjourn, we will be reconvening the, the, um, the SBC for the approval of the minutes of the June 21st meeting. Um, our OPM has indicated that approval of those minutes are an essential part of the preliminary design submission to the MSBA, so, um, we're going to be doing that. So there have been two agendas posted and, uh, the world is on notice. I, I actually noted in the first agenda, we're having two meetings, so I don't want anybody to say they didn't have notice of the second meeting, so. Um, also, uh, to, uh, this will be some, probably some good news to Ms. Mavorito, uh, Mr. Rubenstein and Ms. Cohen. Uh, and Superintendent, uh, Downing, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we are going to eschew the July meeting and go right to our meeting in August, okay? I, I wa, I'm sorry, I stole your thunder on that one, I want to be the, the one to bring that happy vote to everyone. So everybody's going to get the month of July off, uh, in talking to, yeah. Yeah, I, uh, in talking to, uh, our, uh, our OPM today, Ms. Williams, uh, she'd indicated that there wouldn't be a real lot for us to be doing at the July meeting, and, uh, at that time, the MSBA will still be reviewing our submission, so. Um, it was thought that, uh, it might be prudent to give the committee a little bit of a break. Uh, other than that, Madam Chair, uh, that is it, our next meeting will be in August, and, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing this project, thank you.
Great, thanks, Joe. Uh, Mike.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Wilson, I just have a question, I'm sure you've answered this several times, but do we have a, uh, timeline for when the final decision will be made as to what the funding outcome will be, whether it's a renovation or rebuild?
Uh, let me defer to Superintendent on that, what the timeline is, I, I would be remiss if I tried to guess that, I'm not entirely sure at this point.
Uh, yes, Mr. Horash, after submission on June 27th, the MSBA has 30 days to review and get back to us, uh, for their feedback. They don't review the material to say, you're going to do a rebuild or you get a new high school. They review it to say, these are the options, and, and we have to weigh cost options. So it's very, very likely that we would come back to our community and say, if we go with a renovation, it's going to be this much money and this much time. If we go with a new school, it's going to be this much money and this much time. So, uh, we'll have more detail about those options once we get into the next phase of the program, and that'll be after the MSBA returns on their, their, their first comments on the submission, June 27th.
Thank you.
And just a reminder to everybody out there that the School Building Committee website is there for your perusal, has a lot of information on it if you want to dive a little deeper into the details of uh, MSBA bureaucracy, it's actually fascinating. All right, so any other subcommittees that are dying to report something? I don't, yes, go ahead, Rich.
Chairman Rubenstein, would it be okay if I make the report for the Budget War Committee on Monday?
Since I was not there, it would be more than appropriate for you to make that report.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so a lot of what we heard, we saw, we had a joint board meeting between, this will be for the Audit Advisory Committee meeting too, Leah. We, um, we had a joint board meeting, a lot of the issues overlap, but the main reason we had that meeting was we got the draft report from the auditor. Um, so we will be getting the full audit in, I think, June, it's very late this year. Uh, again, probably all COVID related, we would hope to get this back in March. Um, so they're just finishing up, in fact, they're already starting on the next year's audit, so. Um, but the, the net, net is that the audit was clean, uh, in the opinion of the auditor. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, the E and D looks like it's going to end up around a million dollars or 1.2. That's the opinion of the committee, we'll wait to see what happens with the rest of the cost for the year and you know, Director Maroni is, is that person. Um, we do need a new member for Audit Advisory, an at-large member, so if you're interested in being on the Audit Advisory Committee, uh, we will be selecting a new auditor this year, we have one year left, so we'll be going through the process of, um, selecting one, and, um, Mike, is there anything else I forgot, or Brett?
No, just that we had another really, really fruitful discussion on OPEB. Um, that really was the basis for much, much of the meeting, and feels like every time we have one of these conversations, the people who are involved in them learn a little bit more, have a, a slightly or a much deeper understanding and, um, um, they're all just tremendously insightful, so, but I think you did a great job, hey, well done.
Thanks.
I see Joe's hand.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman, um, I'm just lowering my hand here. Uh, just following up on what Mr. Horash said, um, there has been, in at least my community, some rumblings of late regarding OPEB. So perhaps, uh, Mr. Rubenstein or Mr. Eckel could, uh, enlighten the committee as to what was discussed in regards to OPEB, because I know there are people in Lancaster who have inquired of me lately, and I've had to inquire of Ms. Maroni. So any information you can bestow on us would be greatly appreciated.
Well, I think the first thing I would say about it, and I think this is characterized in the conversation, is it's a big number, right? Uh, but it also fluctuates kind of bit based upon what the actuaries think, all their inputs. So I think two years ago, Mike chimed in with the numbers here, two years ago, it was down 15 million. And then this year, this fiscal year was up 15 million, now it's down another 6 million. So it's a big number, it reflects the total liability, future liability that the district would need to pay, uh, over many years. But I've been working on different analogies, and I, I think I got some good ones that the other committees like, uh, the two analogy, one analogy I, I think about it is it's, OPEB is like a, a mortgage, right? You, you could buy your whole house outright, but you would, you know, use that money, it couldn't be used for anything else, right? But the way that, uh, OPEB is different than a, a mortgage is that it's assignable, meaning the next group of people get it, right? It'd be like if you sold your house and could give the mortgage to the next person. And so, in this case, um, we don't want to eat the whole elephant at once, right? We don't need to pay this whole liability at once, so, um, we are making a little pro, the district is making some progress on it, the annual expense is around 750 million dollar, I'm sorry, 750,000 dollars a year to, um, service the, the OPEB benefits, if you will. Um, and then we put an additional 50,000 dollars into the trust fund every year. The trust fund's managed by the state, and the goal of the trust fund, ideally, is that you invest that money and it grows faster than the rate of the increase in the cost for uh, other, other pension employment like, um, benefits, which is what OPEB is, it's essentially the healthcare for the retirees. So, we again ask the same question, um, you know, for comparatives of the auditor, like, you know, how does this compare? Uh, and he would say, he said, look, you're, you're eating into this probably better than most other communities. Um, although 50,000 dollars a year on a 46 million dollar unfunded liability may seem like a pittance, but it is something. Um, and, you know, there's opportunity cost in that, if we, if we do give more, say we put in 150,000 dollars towards the trust fund, well that, you know, that could be a teacher, that could be a program. So these are the, these are the benefits, or these are the, um, the hard choices that I think the superintendent will be looking at when he makes recommendations. He mentioned this is a priority for him on the, on the finance front to, to, I don't, I don't, I don't know how I want to characterize it, understand our situation, so I certainly think he knows OPEB. Um, but he wants to understand the context and what we could do. Um, I will say there are difference, were you going to say something, Superintendent Downing?
I'm happy to, Mr. Eckel, just on that front, I know I've had this conversation with Mr. Hor, Mr. Horash on several occasions. Uh, the intent this year's is, uh, working with, uh, Mr. Mulcarren as he comes into his role, that we use the Budget Workshop in the following presentations to educate our communities around the design and collection of the assessment. And so using that same methodology, I think we'll apply that to educating the public around our OPEB liability in, uh, the next budget season. So I think we can do that on an annual basis to find out what are the key points that we can educate the community on and use that time to do that.
Yeah, and so I guess, I guess what I would say in closing is there are different philosophies on this, I'm pretty sure that Lancaster's philosophy is to actually completely pay it off. Uh, that's my understanding, or pay, pay as significant amount it. Um, I would say that my experience, it's pretty unusual for any municipality to do that, most municipalities pay as you go, right? They, they pay what they can, they pay the liability as it's due every year for, to service that expense, and then stick, organize, or, uh, municipalities like Stowe and Bolton, and I guess Lancaster doesn't have to, because they, they've paid off every year. They pay some into a trust fund, just like the school does. Uh, is it enough that's, you know, putting money into the trust fund, I think that's debatable. Uh, and I think that's what we'll be deciding, uh, is how to, how to deal with that. So I, I guess in sum, what I'd say is, it's a giant, it's a big number, you don't have to pay it right now, it's just like your mortgage. You don't want to pay it off, the other analogy I'd say is it's like a fire truck, right? You go, we bought a new fire truck here in Stowe. You know, I, I may not be here in, in, in 15 years while that truck's still going, so you pay for it, you bond it, you pay for it over time. The community pays for that truck and services it, just like, um, you know, you don't want to pay everything off now, in my opinion, for people in the future that should be helping to pay that cost. So, uh, Leah, did you want to call on Mike and Steve?
Yeah, so, um, I think Mike's hand was up first, go right ahead, Mike.
Yep, I, I, I would just add that whenever we get into conversation about OPEB, it could literally last for four hours. Um, and it often feels like it does, um, and that's because it is such a, a tangle. Um, I would just recommend that if people have further questions, number one, you can reach out to, um, either the superintendent or anyone on budget warrant. Um, but I would also say that I, I think that there's probably some, some deeper explanation coming, um, as the superintendent alluded to, so, uh, that kind of work is happening so that it's a little bit um, as the superintendent alluded to. So, uh, that kind of work is happening so that it's a little bit more digestible for the rest of the community. That's all.
Yeah, and we certainly don't want to deliberate anything, um, regarding OPEB, possible solutions, et cetera. Uh, this is really just growing out of a subcommittee report. Um, go ahead, Steve.
Um, the only thing I would like to say is that Rich, Rich did an excellent, uh, explanation. Basically, it's the future liability that we have accumulated over literally decades of not paying, um, the, into the, into the fund as we should have. And at this point, I think, Rich, I think you, you set up on the dollar value of about 45 million dollars, uh, which certainly, based upon our budget of what, a little over 60 million this, uh, coming year, is certainly, uh, is not feasible. Uh, so what we have chosen to do is we've done, we're doing two things at the same time. Number one, we're putting approximately 50,000 dollars a year towards the, um, the trust that will ultimately pay these benefits out to future retirees, and we are paying the current liability comes through our budget, which I believe is maybe, Rich said 750,000, probably somewhere in, between that and 100,000. OPEB stands for, um, what is it? It's post-employment benefits, other post-employment benefits. These are paid to, uh, employees of the district who, who have retired, and we are committed, uh, there is a commitment that we will pay, um, medical insurance, and I'm not really sure exactly what else is in that, is in that pile of money. But it's, uh, it's kind of like, if any of you are familiar with what happened with the post office system a number of years, a few years ago, when Congress said that you had to fully fund your future benefit liabilities, and, and the post office had to pay about 8 billion dollars, and that's what's kind of put them behind the eight ball for the last 10 or 15 years, particularly from this. Um, as, so that they had to make, make those deposits into our 45 million dollars, uh, equivalent, uh, fund, um, all at one time. And, uh, that's, that's kind of what the problem is here. Um, I don't see, unless we all of a sudden become an, an unbelievably wealthy district, how, uh, other than just kind of biting away at the edges of, of the OPEB liability, we're ever going to be able to, uh, completely get rid of it. It's just something that's going to be there. It's kind of like the, the big elephant in the room, uh, when, when Kirk has to put his budget together.
All right, thanks, Steve. Go ahead, Joe. I think you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is not a con- excuse me, this is not a deliberation, it's simply a yes or no question, or perhaps, I don't know. Uh, the number 46 million was mentioned. I know Ms. Maroni's not here tonight. Is that the latest state certified figure, or is that just a general estimate?
That's, that's a, that's a number I remember hearing last year.
No, it's, uh, I will, I will double check, but my, my recollection is that, uh, it was, it was about 45 million, then it went up to 60 million, and now it's back down to like 56 million, or 54 million. Mike, is that so right too?
That's the number I was given. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, 57 million approximately. So there's a lot of factors that go into that, so.
All right, great, guys. So let's put that subcommittee report to bed. Any other subcommittees that need to report? All right, so items for next agenda are fairly set in stone at this point. So you guys, um, can look for that on the 22nd. So we are going to be meeting next week to tie up a couple of our very important loose ends. And, um, I'm just going to move to adjourn if everybody is cool with that.
Second.
All right. So Steve, I, go to you first.
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen? Sharon?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.